Chairperson is running late, we believe, since he's not here at 5:30. So I am the Vice Chair, Jay Lewis. I will start the meeting of July 22nd, 2019 of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. Need a moving movement, motion to approve the minutes.
And we may have to wait until he gets here to do that. So you might want to move that toward the end.
Okay, let's start with the agenda first then.
Yes.
Do the easy one.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
With one modification, I guess with Paul just said, we'll move the approval of the minutes to number, from number two, move it to three and move three to number two.
The second step?
Call the roll.
Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye. So with that, we will then start the quasi judicial hearing for the major mod adjustment to the planned unit development PUD case. Two days, 2016 PUD property located at 1400 Town Center Way filed by Ian Gutman, the manager of One Anderson Place LLC, property owner. As with any judicial, quasi judicial, we have a script I need to read in case everyone, anyone's giving testimony tonight. So bear with me, this will take about three minutes. First, I'll outline the procedures the Commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter under the zoning resolution. Our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Please. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the Commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and the criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear our opinions, just facts. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the Commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in and being subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application, the applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff or anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witness who testifies before the Commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case to the witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time. After being recognized by the Chair, when all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the Chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, peeked into the microphone and state their name, address and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to three minutes unless a Commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the Commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The Commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support for a previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who will give testimony this evening please stand and raise your right hand? Okay.
We're not all talking, you should think.
Okay. Swearing affirm, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth till help you God?
I do.
And have all of you signed in over here?
Yes.
Great. All right, at this time, we'll ask the staff to deliver.
Great. Yes, the applicant is Ian Gutman. On behalf of One Anderson Place LLC, who is a property owner, the location's at 1400 Town Center Way. And the zoning there is E PUD, which is retail business with a planned unit development overlay. Again, the request is to approve a major adjustment to a previously approved PUD plan that was approved by the zoning commission on February the 22nd, 2016. The modification before you tonight is to allow a 165-unit independent assisted living and memory care senior living facility with five stories at the grade of Town Center Way with two-story parking below the grade of Town Center Way and a parking garage. This is just a little more of a summary of the project itself. There would, is proposed five surface parking spaces off of Town Center Way for visitors, for guests, for short-term parking. 165 units and there is a discrepancy in the cover letter and on the plan. The cover letter says 165 spaces and the applicant is suggesting 165 units versus the 161 units. Two freestanding signs are proposed, one directional and one more of a monumental style sign advertising the facility. A little bit of the history on this site, originally was heard in 2006 and variances were granted in 2006. This is for condominium units above a movie theater. There was a revision in 2008 and again, two revisions in 2008 with the last case again, 2016. That was approved with the following five variances. Setbacks primarily, the front yard setback, a rear yard setback, modification of the height and then modification to allow parking spaces to be located 13 feet, these were the surface parking spaces to the right of way and then also for the density. Again, the last, in 2016, these were for luxury apartments versus what is proposed now, which is senior living. So the density was calculated at that time for independent living, for senior housing in general, independent living, assisted living and memory care density is really not calculated the same as it is for multifamily for apartments. So we did not include that variance request with this application. It was also approved with these conditions, one regarding the landscaping plan. There was an enclosure around the service court requested to be solid. There is a condition regarding the generators and then no rooftop or equipment shall be viewed from surrounding properties. This is the location of the site. So this is Town Center Way. This is the Hammer Parking Garage and then this is the Tri-Health Facility. This is the movie theater and adjacent Anderson Town Center Shops. The Anderson Center is located just to the north and this is Crotty Court, which has a mixture of residential uses from apartments to single-family homes. The aerial, from the aerial, you can see the remnants of the original construction. There are still piers on the site and some of the retaining walls on the site. This is the topography map. The zoning map, the red indicates some form of retail zoning, whether it's E Retail or a PUD. The Anderson Center, our building here is owned for C, single-family, it's a conditional use in the residence area. And then the area of Crotty Court is owned D, which is a multifamily zoning, but also allows for single-family. So this is the site plan. Again, Town Center Way, this is the road, the access road that comes to the Anderson Center. This would be the entrance into the building to the garage, to one level of the garage. It's kind of hard to see, but this is the actual property line. The building itself is outlined here. These are areas of either a courtyard or an area that would be open for some type of outdoor area. This is the main drive and the main entrance of Porte Cachet and this is the surface parking area. This is the grading plan or the site plan overlaying on the topography map. And these are the elevation drawings and I'll let the applicant go into more detail about the description of the construction and the elevation drawings. But this is the view from Town Center Way with the main entrance. And the different, these are the areas where the courtyard or where you could see on the site plan. These are zoomed in areas of the different elevations of the building. This would be the rear view. So it's, I don't know if you can see it on your screen or not, but in your plans, you can see it is still peered. So the piers would go up to a two-level garage and then five stories on top of the two-level garage. So the applicant, we can go to the site photos and then we'll go over the dimensions. So this is the area on Town Center Way looking generally in the south. This is looking in the other direction from the entrance to the, to our building here, looking to the north. The site is located right through here. This is standing on some of the, the area where the actual entrance into the garage would be. This is the movie theater here, so this is generally looking back toward the south again. And this is looking somewhat in the north, but these are the houses on Crotty Court. So this is a view in the winter time with the trees, I mean, in the summertime with the trees. So zoning resolution compliance, these are the articles that either a variance has been granted or a variance is needed. So the applicant's requesting a front yard setback of four feet where 30 feet is required and this was approved in the previous case in 2016. A rear yard setback of zero feet, which was also approved in 2016. So the applicant currently is requesting a height variance of 85 feet. The 85 feet is measured from average grade. They are proposing 60 feet from Town Center Way. I'm not sure who was here to hear this in 2016, but there was a discussion of the height measured from the street versus our strict definition of height in the zoning resolution, which is from average grade. There's such a difference of grade on this particular site. We called out the two different heights, so it would give you a clear understanding of how high the building would actually be. So by strict definition of average grade, they are proposing a height of 85 feet and then 60 feet from Town Center Way. The maximum in that zoning district is 45 feet from average grade in three stories. Which this is actually less than what was approved at the last application in 2016, less in height. And then the number of parking spaces, they are over our optimum number of parking spaces for this type of use, however, it is in a garage. So it's not like a surface parking lot where you have a sea of parking, this is in a garage. So 225 spaces are proposed where for this type of use, only 168 are required. Again, in 2016, the height of 101 feet was, was approved. So staff is of the opinion, just like before, this particular use, we did require the application be brought back before you as a major modification. One, the previous use were luxury apartments and we felt that this type of use was different. Even though it is residential, we felt that it was different and not necessarily the intent behind what you approved the last time. So we brought this before you. Also, the changes in the building height, the setbacks have pretty much stayed the same. And then the style of the building has changed somewhat since the last time in 2016. So, but even still with this type of use, independent living, memory care and assisted living, we still feel, we still feel that it is consistent with the Anderson Plan. The areas identified for mixed use, this adds a residential component to the Town Center area and to the downtown area of Beechmont Avenue. Quality of life, land use and development, we still feel it's consistent with those elements of the comprehensive plan. The township just completed the streetscape project of Town Center Way, so a sidewalk has been constructed through there. It was proposed with the previous development in 2016, but now there's one there. So the site is definitely connected, it's connected to our building and it's connected over to Wolf Angle. It's also connected to the Anderson Town Center. The Beechmont Plan, again, we focused more on, while it's not on Beechmont Avenue, Town Center Way was a connector through, from Wolf Angle to Five Mile Road to connect those two neighborhoods. Site planning, this area is considered part of the downtown area. The building has a vertical element, we're adding residential to the downtown area. The downtown area also encourages buildings to be closer to the roadway to encourage more of that downtown feel. So we feel that this proposal is consistent with that. And then through outdoor spaces, internal traffic circulation, we already spoke about the pedestrian connections, architecture. So we feel that, and I'll let the applicant go into more of their design elements of the building itself. So staff recommends approval based on the following criteria, which is in your staff report. And then staff recommends the following variances. Again, modification from Article 3.14C1, which is regarding the height of the building. Modification from the number of parking spaces and then also, we included, we kept density in there. However, with this type of use, I mean, if it went to all independent living, then, then yes, a variance would be needed. However, since it's memory care, the nature of the use, we feel that it is different than an apartment building. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. I will start down at my far left with Commissioner Eliff.
Thank you. Just one quick question for you, Paul. I do remember when this came back, came through the first time and I was, I was just visiting that time, just got on the board. But I remember seeing the inspirational drawings, which are on these drawings.
Correct.
Still, which look pretty good. Do we take another, when they know what the final look of the building is going to be, do we take another look at that or is this?
For a PUD, you do not.
Okay.
If it was a zone change, you would at the final development plan level, but for a PUD, it does not come back before the zoning.
Okay. All right, that's my only question.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner DiBaggio?
Um, two quick questions. Number one, are we bound by any of the previous decisions? Or is each one of those variances that have been given are project-specific, even though it may be the same developer?
Well, variance runs with the land, but since the project has changed somewhat, no, you can, those can be modified as necessary.
Okay. The second question deals with when I was looking on these maps, looking on cages. It's a curiosity kind of a thing as to how this may affect the people on Crotty. There appears to be a very small strip of land between their property and the residents' backyards. Who's that owned by? Is that owned by Anderson Township?
It's owned by the township, yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's it for me.
Commissioner McBride?
Yep, Paul, just one quick question. Is there a way to put into any kind of potential approval that they would come back to us with more details? You know, when the actual building is designed and the lighting plan is done and the landscape plan is done? Is there a way to put that into it, any potential approval?
I, I, I don't know that that's ever been done with a PUD. I mean, there is always the option of continuing until you receive additional information, but I don't think that that's ever been done. It's usually been reviewed by, at a staff level and if staff felt it was inconsistent with your decision, we would bring it back at that time.
I mean, I, I get that they are not at that level yet, but this is such a huge and significant project to the township, given its location and so forth. So the Commission can discuss that, I just.
Okay. Good. Paul, can you put up the picture slide with the, shows the Anderson driveway now, the road, where they're cut in his.
The site plan?
Not that one, not that one, not that one, that one.
Okay.
So if I understand, the parking garage is going to be at the very end, it's actually going to be a coming down the hill.
This is, this is actually the remnants of where it was proposed before.
So it's coming down the hills where you're going to be turning into the parking garage?
Correct.
Is there any standards we have there, you know, when you're coming out, it looks like when you're coming out of the parking garage, you'll be coming up an incline and then wanting to make a left out, go up to the stop sign, to go back out to maybe Five Mile that way. Is there any standards we have in how far for site distances?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
But the township doesn't have standards?
No.
Okay.
For, well, for parking areas, we do. Yes, we do, actually.
What I'm concerned is just, since that's primarily the number one parking location, that's where the traffic will be coming from. And I know people be, coming through a stop sign, they shouldn't be at a high speed, but also it might be some blind spots.
Well, I'd like the applicant to be.
Okay.
Most of it, most of it, I believe, is regarding the five-foot hill. But it is also across, you know, the rest of the facility, so you look at it high. However, most likely this is all, this is all.
It's a separate, yeah. Right. Okay. But they have a drive-through canopy in the front where there's five parking spots are.
Yeah.
Right. And knowing that some people have an aversion to parking garages, will there be, maybe this is for the applicant, a shared parking agreement with Anderson Center?
I'll let the applicant speak to that and.
Great, thanks. All right, at this time, will the applicant come forward, give your name, address, affiliation?
Good evening, I'm Ian Gutman with Gutman Properties and I'm the manager of One Anderson Place. My address is 10-816 Kenwood Road, Cincinnati 45242. Paul did another excellent job outlining our proposal and I don't have a whole lot to add other than the, you know, the, the, the area that we're accessing the garage is kind of, it's the only place to access the garage given the elevation change from the first floor, finished floor to the level of the garage and so that that ramp is not steep going in, more steep than it would need to be. So as in our apartment concept, it's still mirrored the same location, which mirrored the same location to the movie theater, one-level garage. So we just felt like, from a design standpoint, that that made the most sense. We don't anticipate any issue with site distance or an abundance of traffic, especially with the use being for the, a senior community just because the driving patterns are a lot different than they would be for market-rate apartments. Speaking to the, I guess we do have a PowerPoint a little bit, but I'm not sure. I think that the elevations that are submitted in our, in our submission, pretty much outline the change in materials of the exterior elevations. Our, we do have our architectural consultant with us here that can speak more fully to the thought behind the, the elevation and the massing and the articulation of the, of the exterior of the building. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what else to really, really say, because Paul did just an excellent job outlining our proposal.
We'll do, as we'll go through our Commission here, member by member. We'll be asking questions and you can have either yourself or somebody of your team come up to answer them, so. Should I ask Commissioner Eliff?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Gutman. Just a couple of questions for you. In the front on these types of buildings with the senior residents, when they start to lose their driving privileges, a lot of them get very handy with ordering things like Uber, ordering things from Amazon. So there's all kinds of drop-off stuff happening. I saw the five parking spaces and some kind of circulation area in front. What's, what sort of a thought have you given into that? I'm sure you've seen this with your apartment.
Very good question. Paul, can you please go to the site plan elevation that just shows the Porte Cachet and that one is fine? So if you could, just to the left of the Porte Cachet, you'll see that we have our loading door in the recessed into the notch of the building. And I don't know if my Leesure pointer will work here, but I brought one that I've had for a long time. Oh, yeah. So this right here, so this is designed, here's a curb here and an outdoor patio. And when we have our deliveries for food service and for move-ins and things like that, this is designed for a truck to back in right here where there will be double three-foot wide doors to have a six-foot opening. And our, our commercial kitchen is situated right here as well in the building, so that we can accept our food deliveries right, right there. And the Porte Cachet here, the circulation, this is our main front door. So everybody will enter and exit from that location of the building when they're being picked up or dropped off.
So like if they ordered something to eat on their phone, there's a place for the guy to pull in there and run in and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. And in our community as such as this, we'll have a concierge service and there'll be somebody in the main entranceway, you know, 24 hours a day.
Okay. And can you talk a little bit about what the units will be like? Sometimes for assisted living, they look very much institutional. I've been in assisted living where you walk in, you can't tell the difference between a really nice apartment complex from the hallways and the units. What are your units going to be like, whether the appointment's going to be like, do you anticipate?
Very good question, I appreciate that. So for the independent, well, for all of the designs of our residences here, they will be upscale in nature. So in our independent living apartments, they'll be the same fit and finishes as you would see in an upscale apartment home. Solid surface countertops, stainless steel appliance, appliances, tile or some sort of surface backsplash in the kitchen. Full-height vanities, full-height, you know, kitchen counters and the whole nine yards. Upscale lighting package will be in each residence, as well as crown molding in the living and dining areas. It will be just like walking into an apartment. The new, the new age of senior community design is, is to not differentiate the, the, the elements of an apartment home from what people are accustomed to, to this type of retirement community. So we are getting away as an industry away from the institutional quality or the institutional appearance of what we're doing. It's more of a hospitality model where we don't necessarily do life, safety and healthcare here. It's a big misconception. We'll have caregivers around the clock for the assisted living clientele and for the memory care. But if somebody is having a medical emergency, we'll be calling 911, just like they would at their home.
I see. Okay. That was a sim, I did have a similar question for the care level, for example. Assisted living, you have somebody there helping them with like medication and stuff like that?
It just depends on what the resident needs. Oftentimes, a resident will need help with personal hygiene or help with medication reminders or even assistance walking from their apartment to the assisted living dining hall. And whatever they need, they'll, we'll have caregivers there to help them with assistance with what's referred to as activities of daily living. Those don't consist of, you know, providing medical assistance. Like I said, if somebody's having a medical issue, our staff will call 911, just like they would if they were in their home. The difference is, in assisted living, we'll go to any number of what is referred to as care levels. To the point where if somebody is bedridden and needing 24/7 kind of around-the-clock care, they'll either have an option to stay with us, but they'll have to provide their own 24/7 care themselves or they'll be asked to go to a skilled nursing facility, which is better equipped to handle that kind of resident.
And I just have, just a couple more quick questions. You referenced this, is there a shared dining, like restaurant?
Yes, there is. We, yes, there is. We have three, three distinct dining areas based on the, the style of apartment home that one resides in. So there will be a larger dining room, which will be a kind of, you know, akin to a, a country club dining room, which will service the independent living clientele and their guests. There will also be on the, on the upper, uppermost level, the fifth floor, a sports pub kind of casual dining environment there with a potential, with an outside deck area, rooftop deck. And then in the assisted living, we'll have a dining room that's designed to accommodate that clientele. And in the memory care, we will have yet another dining facility for that level of care.
Very helpful, thank you. And I would like to hear maybe from the architects after you all, you know, I don't want to keep asking all the questions, but I would hear a little bit about the finished materials on the building. I saw the drawings laid that out, but I'd like to hear from your design staff.
You can either go now or come back to you.
I would say come back perhaps.
Commissioner DiBaggio?
Curious question, what caused the change in use of this property?
It's a very good question. Back in 2016, when we were lined up for our seven-story apartment building, over three stories of parking garage, once we got into our cost estimating, which was way different of a building type that I had been involved with. Coming in prior to the approval, we had thought that we had done an adequate analysis on our project costs, but we, we were undershot our costs, so we, we pulled back from that plan. And one of the things that is attractive, we've kind of, we're struggling with the cost of the garage and the cost of the seven-story building because it's no longer built out of wood, which is what my background has been. And one of the things that is attractive, we've kind of, we're struggling with the cost of the garage, and the cost of the seven-story building, because it's no longer built out of wood, which is what my background has been, four stories out of wood, so I added a whole lot of fudge factor to estimate the seven stories, and even talked to Bradford and Gore, who was building the, the buildings downtown at the banks, and I just blew the estimate. And, and instead of getting deeper into it, we, we were cutting our teeth on our first senior community in Louisville, Kentucky, which took a lot of our attention, we've got our experience, and we said, what would be the best of, of all worlds here, would be to balance a, a community here in Anderson Township, that doesn't have the same demand on the parking as market rate apartments would have. So, we were able to get a, a good base of, of residents here, and a lesser amount of parking, so it kind of balances that out, that's why we're down to two hundred and twenty parking spaces, instead of three hundred and sixty, which we were, or three hundred and thirty, which we were before, in, in our parking ratios here, because the seniors don't drive as much, and they don't have as many cars, and we have a lot of one-occupant residences, the parking demand is less. Now, the reason why we're two hundred and twenty or so parking spaces on this plan, versus the minimum of one sixty-five or one sixty-eight, is because of the way the building is designed on the site, where the parking, and the, the parking structure in the building have to align, so that's really the reason why there's some extra parking.
Okay, can I assume, therefore, that some of that extra parking could be used by visitors?
Yes.
Okay.
And as part of what we are planning to provide to our residents and their visitors, is because the parking is all below, we'll have, we'll have color-coded parking markers in the garage level, so if the residents are driving and parking themselves, they'll recognize their level that they're on, you know, when they park, they'll have reserved or assigned parking spaces, but we'll have valet capabilities as well, as one of the services that we'll offer to our residences, our residents.
Okay, lighting plan, is there a lighting plan that is, is being presented with this, I know there was one, I believe there was one with the last drawings, or the last purpose?
Jim, or, somebody talk to me about a lighting plan. The lighting plan on Anders- on Town Center Way is the, is, are there already, I believe, so our lighting plan will consist of whatever decorative lighting that we're going to do on our port au cachet, we'll have lights in the ceiling of the port au cachet, to light that area there, but I don't believe that we'll have, we'll have any pole lights here, there's, there's nowhere to put any.
Okay.
And then down our ramp to the garage, we'll have some, some downlighting that will light the surface.
Okay, my main concern is the neighbors behind, to make sure no light, not too much ambient light anyways, headed towards those people in their living, their living rooms.
Yes, there, there won't be any sight lighting, per se, in the rear of the building, however, we have patio, we have decks, and the lighting that we use on our decks are down, downlights, they're not the glass globe with the bulb in it, that will see a bunch of those in the back, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sensitive to that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and the last question I have is about the sanitary sewer, if I'm reading the plans right, it's going to go underneath the building and underneath the, the parking garage, is that correct?
Correct, the sanitary sewer is existing and, and in place already, it actually, there's a sanitary sewer main trunk line that runs along the creek line there.
Right.
So, it's already there, so we just intend to utilize what's there.
Okay, all right, that's it for me.
Commissioner Bright?
So, I'm sure you guys did do a market study or something, it just seems like we have gotten a lot of, great, none of us are getting any younger here on this commission, or elsewhere, but, you know, we've got a brand-new one that's just opening now on Beachmont, we've got one that we've approved down on Clough, that obviously is not in the opening stages yet, and some other developments that are coming along, so, did you do, I'm sure you did a market study.
Yes. Well, you know, it's, it's funny that you, you refer to the clientele, but, but we have done a, a market study, the majority of our residences here are independent living, which, you know, with the silver tsunami coming, you know, is, is ideal, I've got it, I know, I'm looking forward to it. But, and, and that's one of the reasons why we, we de-emphasized the assisted living in our, in our mixture of, of resident types, we de-emphasized assisted living and memory care, but we feel like, in order to be sustainable, and be attractive in the marketplace, we would like, we need to have, we feel like we need to have all three acuity levels, so that when mom moves in, we have the accommodations to age, age in place, with the exception of skilled nursing.
And that brings me to my next question, my question, so, give me the unit breakdown then, how many are independent, how many are assisted, how many are memory care?
We are a hundred and thirteen independent living, thirty-six assisted living, and sixteen memory care.
And are they on, like, specific levels, or how is that broken up?
Exactly, so, on the right-hand, on page left of the building, where, and there was, this came up as well, this is an interior courtyard, so the memory care of the building is basically here, on a one-story structure.
A lower story?
The first floor.
The first floor.
The first floor, so that interior courtyard is the outdoor space for the memory care clientele, it's fully enclosed. The, this portion of the building that comes across like this is five stories here, and over on this side of the building, floors one, two, and, help me out, Russ.
One, two, three, and four.
One, two, three, and four, over here, are assisted living, and then floor five, across the entire top, is independent living, and on the right-hand side of the building, is entirely independent living, floors one through five. Now, on floors one, or, on floor one, we have the, what's like a two thousand square foot commercial kitchen, which will be the main kitchen facility for the entire community, and flanking the kitchen on the page, plan right, would be the independent living dining room and their bistro, we have like a, a bistro casual area on the first floor, and in the rear, there'll be an outdoor dining deck on the, this independent living, and to, flanking the kitchen to the left will be the assisted living, and then there will be a short common corridor that will be utilized to transport meals from the main kitchen to the memory care staging area.
Then, you mentioned, so, well, there, there will be pull cords in, like, in the assisted?
Yes.
Units, but not the independent?
Correct.
Is the building going to be sprinkler?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, talk to me a little bit about the amenities, I've heard, you know, pub, I've heard, you know.
So, in the, on the, are we able to put our?
You want to wait for that?
We have a, we, we put on our slide deck, we have all five floors of our building, and it's color-coded.
I'll hang on for the amenities, I'll, I'll wait for those.
Okay.
So, how do you make sure that they are going to be seniors, I mean, what's, is it fifty-five and up, is it?
It's fifty-five, it's fifty-five and up, and we, you know, the way that we're designed, and you, we talked about the units, the actual residential floor plans, and they're sized in a way to, they're, they're smaller in design on purpose than market rate apartments, so in our apartment plans, a typical one-bedroom, one-bath apartment home would be about eight hundred square feet or so, in our program, here, they're going to be about six hundred, six hundred and fifty square feet, and the idea is, is to make it, remember, most of these residents would be occupied by one person, and the idea, and what makes this so appealing, in this model of senior communities, is that they, we, we're making our floor plans, you know, for living, but we would like to see the seniors come out of their apartments and into the common areas where they can socialize, because we're social beings, and the studies show that people live longer, live younger, and healthier in a social setting. So, with being able to provide the nutrition to our, to our residents, and the social activities, and the social setting, we'll have transportation for folks to make local trips, and, and things of that nature, and we'll have activities director with, you know, it's not just bingo, it's, it's all kinds of different activities, we'll have guest lecturers come in for lecture series, we'll have a, we're, we're planning an indoor swimming pool, and a fitness center, because the whole paradigm shift is more towards hospitality, living younger, living a more full existence than staying in home.
So, the units, you described some of the features of the units, are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom, some of the independent?
In the independent living, they'll consist of one bedroom, and one bedroom, one full bath, or two-bedroom, two-bath residences, and they'll range in size from six hundred and fifty square feet, or more or less, to nine hundred and fifty, maybe a thousand and fifty square feet.
And will there be, like, storage areas too?
We have, yes, in, in, in some of the areas of the building, we'll have storage facilities that we'll make available to the residents, but in the independent living apartments, they are just that, they're full kitchens, and the main, the main difference between an apartment for independent living, and an apartment for assisted living, is that independent living, well, the key difference is, is that they have a full range and oven, and they have also a disposal, okay? And a dishwasher, it's a full appliance package, as you would in any apartment home, or any, any home, the key there, the key change, though, going from independent living to assisted living, is that there are no stove tops in, in assisted living, because all three meals come included in their, in their, in their rent, but there's no disposal either, you know, they're not cooking, so there's no disposal, what has happened in our experience, or not our personal experience, but the experience that we've learned, is that, you know, the elderly clientele may drop something into disposal, and they might turn it on, and then there goes their wedding ring, or something of that nature, so, so that's a key difference. The key difference between us and other senior housing developers, is that we are, we'll put in a real, a real-sized refrigerator in the assisted living apartments, where a lot of our, our colleagues and other businesses would put in a dorm-style, you know, so we're not trying to make it that much of a change from living at home to living, to living with us. And then in memory care, there are no kitchens, it's basically a, a studio suite, if you will, we'll have some private suites, and some companion suites.
And pets, are they allowed to have pets?
Yes, absolutely, pets, pets are advantageous to the fulfillment of.
Note to self, bring your pets, okay, what about during construction, then, where are the construction works, you know, how is that, I mean, that just sounds like a nightmare.
Well, there's a park and ride, no, I'm kidding, we're, we have to build the garage first, no doubt, because we have to build up, so that we have a flat surface to build our building on, so when we have two hundred and twenty parking spaces in the garage, we'll coordinate where our, our, the subcontractors will park, and we'll take deliveries, you know, as they come into our entrance, we'll build our site, we'll build our podium, we'll have access where the port au cachet is going to be, and to the other areas of the front of the building, for deliveries, and then also to the side.
I mean, just thinking about pumping all that concrete, you know, is that, are those guys going to be on Town Center Way, or how?
I don't, I haven't given that a whole lot of thought just yet.
Yeah, I just can see, like, the Mexican restaurant being upset because all the parking is being used by, you know, and the concrete pumpers that are waiting in line to dump the concrete, you know.
Well, I don't have an answer for that. I would like to have, I'd like to have one, that would be just off the cuff, but I, but I don't.
And then, are you going to be able to reuse any of the existing construction that's taken place here?
We will likely be able to use the concrete haunch, that I call it, over to the, off of the, the drive that comes down to this building, to get into the garage, but other than that, we don't, we don't plan on saving any of that, the, the drilled piers that are installed for the single-story theater building that started, in the single-story garage, they're not in the right place, so those will be abandoned in place, they might get cut down if they're in the way somewhere, but we're not going to take those out.
And how many employees do you anticipate having?
There will be, there will be, there will be somewhere between thirty-five and fifty full-time equivalents.
Per shift?
No, full-time, throughout, throughout the whole, full-time equivalents throughout the whole twenty-four-hour period of time. Yeah.
And then EMS, if they were needed, I'm assuming they would just pull up to the port au cachet and?
They're going to pull up to, well, to the port au cachet first, or if, when they, when we get educated, they'll probably pull up to the door where we accept deliveries. Because there's a, a large elevator in that location as well.
And I'm very anxious to hear about the finish on the back of the garage, since the township has spent all this money on that.
We're not having any finish back there, it's just open, that's one of the benefits.
On the parking garage, we'll, we'll wait and see how the architect chooses.
Yeah, no, the, Russ is here.
Okay, took most of my questions, but I do have some follow-up, so, on the pets being allowed, where will the pets be, go out to exercise, or, or walk, you don't have much green space?
At the, at the community that where, that my dad lives, the, they, they'll walk, the, the caregivers or the residents will walk their dog around the, the property, around the neighborhood, and whatnot.
But it's mostly surrounded by concrete.
Yeah, well, they're, well, we're going to walk down to your park.
Okay. Looking at Paul.
They're all going to have cats.
Yeah. If somebody's there, and they come in as an independent living, and then they transition to assisted care, so based on what you're designing, they would have to move apartments, is that correct?
Correct.
And even going to memory care, then?
Especially in memory care, but there is a transition in the industry that is referred to as assisted living light, so, for example, my father lives in the Kenwood, which is there on Kenwood Road, and he moved in with his wife under the independent living, you know, criteria auspices, well, he's been there five years now, he's eighty-nine, and he needs, he's at the point where he needs twenty-four-seven care, so, we had two choices, we could either leave him in his apartment that he was accustomed to, and bring in, this is the independent living light part, bring in help to him when he needs it, and it started out not twenty-four-seven, but it grew over the years, or we could have disrupted his environment, and moved him into the assisted living area of the building, so our customer, our residents here will have a choice.
Do you see those numbers changing between what you, the one thirteen to thirty-six, as, those are pretty?
From, from this meeting, going to the construction or the development?
Down the line, would you?
We can't control, if somebody rents an, an independent living apartment, and they choose to stay there beyond their ability to remain independent, and they do what we did for our father, and brought caregivers to him, then those apartments will always stay independent living apartments, but they might be utilized for quasi-assisted living as time goes.
Okay, as far as the parking garage, is that key access, gated access, free access?
Garage door, there will be a garage door at the entrance, down the ramp, at the bottom of the ramp, there'll be a garage door to get in with a key card.
What about for visitors?
Well, visitors will have to come to the front, and they'll either valet park, or they'll get a temporary card to use.
And will employees also use the same parking?
Yes.
Do you envision a shared parking agreement with any other businesses?
I do not.
Okay.
So, just from a statistic standpoint, we calculate one and a half parking spaces for each independent living residence, three, per unit, three-quarters of a space for each assisted living unit, and a half a space for each memory care unit, and within those ratios include the parking demands that are, that are, that are necessary for our residents and for our employees.
Okay, I had brought up a question to staff about the sightlines of the parking garage, the entrance and the exit, can you talk, someone speak to that?
Sure, we can, we can speak to that, but that location, that's on the plan here, where the, the existing entrance had been approved and built for the, the movie theater property, from an engineering standpoint, will have a far, far less traffic at peak, at any time of the day, than there would ever be from a apartment development that was using the same, the same access point, and from a theater development that was, be using that same access point.
Do you notice any issue?
Not at all.
Okay.
Just to answer your question real quick while we're on the topic, so we require fifty feet from the intersection, and their entrance is about a hundred feet.
Okay, good, thanks for following up with that, Paul. I think it's most of my, my questions at this point, want to come back and ask of the architects some questions, or is there a presentation you wanted to?
Do you see this on your?
Commissioners would like to see the, the presentation.
Do you see this on your screen? Okay, thanks for having us. A lot of this is a repeat, so, this is, this is just depicting the, the clientele that we anticipate having in our community, and, you know, the fact that, you know, we're, we're bordered by the Anderson Town Center, which is just a phenomenal complementary use to, to our community that we're planning here. And here's our elevation is a blow-up, so, at the lower, at the lower levels here, at the ground level, we have masonry, and then more like a, like, yes, a storefront appearance, and then above here, we have brick on this portion of the building with a, a precast header, and then hardy board on the upper levels, and that's the, a similar. And that's the, a similar elevation pattern, use of materials that we'll find on the each end of the building and on the front of the building. Due to the, well, I'll get to the rear in one moment. So inside of our community, well, as we're depicting here, we'll have multiple dining venues, and a rooftop club, and an indoor swimming pool, a separate yoga room and stretching room, one and the same. There's an art studio, there's a dedicated massage area that's part of the wellness and beauty area. There's a, like I said before, there's a commercial kitchen. There are numerous sitting areas and passive common areas within the building. You know, a full beauty and nail salon. There are actually two, two of those. One is dedicated to the independent living clientele, and the other is dedicated to the assisted living and memory care clientele. We'll have game rooms and, you know, lecture spaces and multipurpose areas. And some of this is a repeat. Here's, here is, the top image here is the first floor of the building. So this is starting on the left. This is the courtyard for the memory care that we mentioned, and everything in green in here are dedicated interior common spaces for the memory care residents. The, the orange color is the common spaces that's allocated to the assisted living common area into those residences. Blue is back of the house areas, such as, you know, here, there will be a wellness office, there will be other support staff, storage facility, medicine room. Those types of uses are in the blue. And then the purple are the common area spaces that are designed for the independent living clientele. And the gray, as it states, as it stands right now, this is the area that we have our administrative offices. So the general manager of this community, or what we refer to them by as executive director, they'll be working out of that gray area along with our leasing personnel and the back room up, the back, back of the house operation, accounting and business office and the like. These blue areas are, those are a common, the spaces for back of the house storage, maintenance rooms, and janitor rooms and that type of, that type of space. So the first floor has the majority of the common spaces, but it's, part of the design is to bring on the second floor other common area spaces so that the, the common area spaces are in and around where the residents will be traveling from their apartments to wherever they may be going. So some, most of those are passive spaces. A lot of times, they're used for a resting place as a senior is walking from their apartment to a common space that they can have a place to sit for a moment if they need to. And then on the third floor, which is the upper image, there's some carry, there's the additional common spaces. And all said and done, about 40% of the building itself becomes common area. Perhaps a little bit less in this particular plan. And then on the fifth floor, here is our, our rooftop sports pub area, if you will, and outdoor, outdoor terrace. Here is a theater or a multipurpose room. And as you can see, the fifth floor is only in this particular area here. And then the fourth floor goes all the way over to here underneath, above the third floor and the second floor. So the fifth floor stops in this location right here. This is some image, this is, this is an actual photo on the top left of our community in Louisville, Kentucky. So that's our grand foyer there. And the, the bottom left and bottom right are actual photos of our, of our models in Louisville. And the artist rendering is in the center. So this is an independent living apartment, stainless steel appliances. It's hard to see, but there's tile backsplash, cor, quartz countertops, and crown molding, crown molding throughout the common, the living space, the kitchen and the dining and the living room. The exact style of interior design is not yet determined for One Anderson Place, but it will be upscale in nature, given the target, the target market and the clientele that we're intending to serve.
Are they furnished?
No. No, everybody brings their own, their own furnishings.
Okay.
And there's your Anderson Town Center. And thank you very much.
I didn't see a chapel or on-premises.
These days, we're, the, there's not a dedicated sanctuary, if you will, but rather a multipurpose room is utilized for services throughout the week or during holidays.
Okay. And as far as maintenance is for you, Paul, are we reserving alcohol in your sports pub?
Um, yes, we will.
Is that something that we should be concerned with at all? Sure, follow-up questions?
So laundry, is there laundry in each of the units, or is it central, or how does that work?
All of the independent living residences have dedicated laundry hookups there. If they choose to bring a laundry washer dryer, they'll have in apartment, in-home laundry.
The size?
Full-size. And the assisted living do not have, the assisted living and memory care do not have dedicated, the assisted living, there'll be one or two laundry rooms, if you will, that will each have two washers and two dryers in them.
And then garbage, how is garbage handled?
Um, we're going to have trash chutes, and we'll have, in our garage, the first level of the garage, we'll have a dedicated room with a trash compactor, what they call a mini-mac. So there'll be a two- or three-yard container that will get compacted in that room. And then our maintenance personnel will wheel those with a machine out to the staging area where Rumkey will be able to pick them up.
So if I'm in the assisted living, I just put it outside my door and somebody lugs it down?
One of our caregivers or personnel will take care of the trash for you. But you're not ready for that level of care just yet.
Let's see, rooftop units, so as we're staging this back, are we putting, I mean, you don't have a lot of other places to put it, so...
From the HVAC design, there'll either be split systems, and the condensing units will be on the roof, or there'll be a VTAC unit, which will be a self-contained HVAC, be a self-contained unit. We'll have a grill on the outside of the building that will provide the HVAC for each, HVAC for each residence.
And if there are the rooftop, you're going to screen those on the side, because you're not going to want the residents to have to use it.
Well, to the extent that it's necessary, for sure. And on the memory care portion of this building, since all the temperature is controlled by the staff, there'll be separate, there'll be larger, larger capacity systems there, so there'll be fewer of them.
Just two other quick, dollar-wise, what do you, I mean, I'm not trying to pin you down, I'm just curious about what we're thinking about monthly-wise. And obviously, it depends by the level of care, but just independent.
So on the independent, we would anticipate for the, the range to be in the 2,900 to 3,900, maybe 4,500 a month. There will be, from a distribution of units, the majority of them will be one-bedroom, one-bath. And there will be, you know, a pretty fair number, but not a whole lot of the bigger, of the bigger style. So there'll be a range there.
And then, do you, how do you see this as linking to the Anderson Town Center? We have some spaces there that, by frankly, have never sadly been filled. So you're bringing a whole new population with direct access to the town center. What kinds of things do you say, and I'm asking you to look into that crystal ball, I am, and say, what kind of uses might be complementary to what you're looking at?
Okay. Next question, please. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, get back to you on that one. And then, the only other question I have, so walk me through again with the back of the parking garage, just in a moment.
Let's take, let's see if I can find an image here. Oh, there you go. How about that? So Russ, please.
He still hasn't answered my last question.
Well, this will give me time to think about that one.
Hi, my name is Russ Garber. My address for notice is a 775, oops, I'm sorry. Yard Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43212. Oh, and I work for M&amp;A Architects, by the way, and I am, we are the architect of record for the project. The building is, we really took some consideration in trying to break up the size of the building, so you'll notice at the, at the front side, it, we looked at paralleling Town Center as much as we possibly could in creating the secure courts at the front. At the backside of the building, you'll notice towards the five-story portion where the independent living is, we've got our balconies on the IL units. And then as it moves over towards the right-hand side, you can see for, that those are the higher cuties level folks, so we don't necessarily want them to have upper-story balconies. So the, the building mass does come down at that side. If you look at the blow-up a little bit, if we could go to the detail that had the blow-up, and then I'll answer the garage question. There you go. Underneath of the text box there, you can see that there are ins and outs across the front. So we've got, we've got the brick masonry, okay, I'll go to the image here on the left first. Where, you know, one of the things that the comprehensive plan really wants to do is, is get a pedestrian scale and really be able to connect the architecture with the pedestrian at the street. So you can begin to see the, the size and scale of the signage, the ideas of a planting wall and courtyards behind, which gives it a very much of a human scale. And then at the front, where you've got the storefront, which is very reminiscent of walkable communities with the larger-scale masonry product there. And we don't have, I'm not going to, we don't have every product picked, but we want a larger scale. So you're going to have a much more urban, streetscape feel. And then above that is the more classic veneer brick masonry to give it a little bit more substantial quality. The building being five stories, we just went with a really rusticated approach, where you've got the larger masonry pieces at the bottom, and the building gets progressively lighter as it goes up to the board and battened fiber cement siding. There was a conscious effort to begin to bring some ins and outs and relief in the elevation, so you can begin to see, what you look at the image there on the right, you can begin to see that the balconies do create some ins and some shadow lines, so you're going to be able to create some depth. And then there are some projecting bays along the back in order to create some interest along the backside. The building's going to be a wood frame building above the podium. The parking deck would be a cast-and-place concrete. And so we're looking at a, it would be maybe like a form liner concrete, or it'd be a cast-and-place finished concrete along the backside of that. I want to make sure I get it, the nomenclature right that was on our exhibit, so I'm not saying the wrong thing.
Is that tinned, or is that...
It would be nice, to be honest, to have it, to give it some color. You've got to keep everything, if I go back to the, who's got my clicker there? There was an inspirational image, kind of at the very beginning of the slide, that gave some color tones. There, there it is. I think the neighborhood in itself is, you know, it's a transitional kind of architecture. It's, it's not real contemporary, and it's not real traditional. It's a blend of both. And so I think this as an inspirational image does well to explain some of the architecture and to be contextual with the Anderson Place across the street. And I think some of the things that I liked and our client liked here, what I think is the contrast between the colors, where you've got some, you've got some traditional brick colors and precast colors, which lend itself to the neighborhood, but a little bit of boldness in the color on something to add some architectural features. So to answer your question on color, I think that, you know, concrete, when it's first poured, is very bright. And then after a while, it goes kind of gray. So I think we would perhaps explore some coloration of that, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern is, you know, the township put a lot of money into this building.
Yeah.
And it's used for a whole variety of uses, which is important. Including weddings out by the, you know, and who wants to look and see a concrete parking garage in the back of their wedding pictures? So I think that one of the things that we would want to make sure of is staff is going to be the ones to review these, is that in fact, that that really had a finished level on the, a finished, finished on the level.
It wants to look finished, complete.
Yes, as opposed to just poor concrete and that's it.
Understood. Any other questions I can answer on the finish or material?
Commissioner Ehlif, did you have some questions for the architect? Okay, okay, great. No other questions from the commission? At this time, we'll ask anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward. Okay. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay. Any questions back to staff before I close it? Okay, at this time, we'll close the...
I have one more question. Paul, the people that live behind, the residents behind, can I assume that they were given notice that this meeting was happening?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
As well as I'm assuming that there...
Yes. Okay. This time, I'll close the, the public section, session, and ask if the commissioners like to speak among ourselves, feelings about the, the application. Start with Commissioner Ehlif.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, doing a very good job. I did feel like my questions were answered about how the building is going to look and the finished materials. I'm satisfied that that's going to be a very good quality, and I know that Paul will be able to, when he gets the details, make sure that that's consistent with what we were provided. And I was impressed with Mr. Gutman, because obviously, they're, they're doing a trial run down in Louisville, which I think is very positive for the success of our project here. But also, he, he mentioned he's got some experience on the customer side with his father, which I think gives him a practiced eye on what would really serve his clients well and Anderson Township well. So I think we're kind of lucky there as well. And that's all I have. I, I think it's a great project. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner DiBaggio?
I think I may just simply say ditto. I think Brian...
You can't say that?
Can I say that? Thank you. I think Brian phrased everything very succinctly.
Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, I mean, I started out with some questions about should we try to bring it back or whatever, but I feel comfortable, much more comfortable in that, having seen the presentation and so forth.
Yeah, I, jump, sorry, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think I have concerns about not seeing the lighting plan, the landscaping, the HVAC enclosures and things like that, but your presentation and your, you know, is very professional. I personally have an eight-year, had an eight-year relationship with the New England Club, so I have an idea of what to look for when interviewing you. And I think you've had a lot of the, through your presentation and what you've offered, what the, the market segment would be looking for. So at this time, I would entertain a motion. And Commissioner McBride?
I did it while I was gone. We didn't do a thing while you were gone. You just kind of had my knee replaced, that's why we didn't do it. Anyway, so I would make a motion then on case Anderson 2-2016, which is a major adjustment to the PUD for One Anderson Place 1400 Town Center Way, that we approve the major modification as presented, based on the consistency with the adopted township plans, the consistency with the PUD criteria, and approve the variances that are being requested based on staff consideration. I would add two conditions to that. One, that any rooftop units be fully screened from both public right-of-way and from the unit within the development itself, and that the finish on the north face of the garage be of a finished appearance.
Okay. You have it? The parking garage facade?
On the north elevation, have a finished elevation. I think Paul knows what we're...
Finished elevation.
Sort of a transitional color scheme to...
And actually have a finish to it, as opposed to just poor concrete.
Right. You good? Okay, I have a second.
I'll second.
Please take your role.
Mr. Ehlif?
Aye.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to the last agenda item. You're welcome to stay or leave. Just want to take a minute. I do not believe we can approve April.
Looks like only May.
Yeah.
May, maybe we can approve. June, no. Okay, so the motion to approve the May 20th, 2019 minutes as delivered by staff?
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes with two corrections. And I showed these to Sarah and I'll pass this down on page six to change the word to agreement in the fourth paragraph from agreeance. And also on page nine, the discussion that we had with the applicant regarding the windows was to, of course, keep the site clean, but he also agreed not to clutter the window appearance with excessive window signage. This is the discussion we had there. And he seemed to be in agreement with that. And I can pass these notes down.
Okay.
For staff. So with those changes, I'd move to approve it, approve those minutes.
Do I have any second of commissioners?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ehlif?
Aye.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
I'm staying.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.